Three, two, one. Hey Buzzheads, welcome to uh.
Buzzhead Radio.
Buzzhead Radio.
Buzzhead Radio. Buzzhead Radio. So we got the intro music is playing. You are again. So we've got. Uh Buzzhead Radio. Okay, hey everybody, welcome to another episode of Buzzhead Radio.
Oh, it's a special episode.
It is a special episode. Don't forget, if you guys want to give us a holler, it's 580-541-3805 is the official Buzzhead hotline, or you can email us at buzz@buzzheadmedia.com. So yeah, like you said, tonight is going to be a special episode. It is in conjunction with several people, but let's get a quick announcement out of the way. If you guys need your car worked on, if you have any auto body problems, don't forget to give Ken Hunnall and the clan over at Enid Auto Body a shout.
Shout, shout, shout to the, no, no, don't shout to the devil. That's a, that's a song. Yeah, they got a really cool thing online. You can go to enidautobody.com and click on the estimate link. Um, you can, you just take pictures of your car, you know, walk around, get a good, you know, get several good pictures of the damaged area, send it to them, they'll get on the phone with you, get you all taken care of. It's, it's, it's really cool, you know, and you know what? You can go in there and there's a big window. So you can see all the cars that they're working on and you can see your car being worked on. You go in there whenever you want. No, hell, they'll take you back in there and show you what's going on. Pretty cool. Or you can call them at 580-234-5492. I should have that number memorized by now, but I don't.
One of these days you will. But anyway, the reason we even bring that up is because Enid Auto Body is the official sponsor of the Buzzhead Radio Podcast. So we appreciate them helping us keep this podcast on the air. So shout out to Blazer Pro. Uh, so Justin went and set up the recording equipment and the cameras. So if you're listening to this on the podcast, there is also a video version at youtube.com/EnidBuzz. So it's all on video. If you're watching this on video on YouTube, you can just listen to the audio version on pretty much any podcasting app and the podcast is called Buzzhead Radio.
Which you should be listening to anyway.
You should be listening to it because we talk about Enid every week, kind of the events. This week, we're not really going to talk about much because we're going to leave uh the, the interview to be most of the episode this week. So, so basically what um, they all got together, Justin Blazer recorded everything.
Thank you, Justin.
Frank Baker and April and Cindy Allen all asked questions. And so you guys will get to hear the podcast coming up. So uh, we're just going to kind of turn it over to those guys. And again, we want to thank Cindy Allen with the Enid News and Eagle. We want to thank April Danahay, and we want to thank Frank Baker and Blazer Pro for bringing this next interview. So you guys, listen up.
Well, welcome in. I'm Frank Baker, and this is going to be a very fun afternoon, evening, early morning, whenever the heck you're watching this. Uh, we're here at City Hall, City of Enid, and it's a great opportunity to see where the city's going in the future and also where we've been in the past. And, and to help us uncover all that, we have a former city commissioner and current city commissioner, Rob Stallings. And at the head of the table, uh, we'll call him Daddy, we have Mayor David Mason, who's our current mayor and a former city commissioner as well. And then going on around the horn, looking radiant in green, April Danahay, head of corporate communications and human resources at Security National Bank.
Yes, and used to cover the city beat quite a bit for radio.
She was a great news director back in the, she's tough. And speaking of tough, Cindy Allen, the publisher of the Enid News and Eagle.
The toughest of all.
Yeah, I wouldn't argue with that. So guys, this is, before we get started, we've got a whole array of city things to talk about. But first off, let's, let's get a little background because I mean, I've known both you gentlemen for a while. A lot of people know you, but maybe in general, in terms of background, not so much. So Rob, we'll start with you. Give us a little bio on the Rob Stallings, if you would.
Well, my bio is no secret, thanks to Cindy Allen. When you run for political office, they print everything they know that you'll give them about you.
And he's also a pillar of the plane.
Yes, he is.
On the front page. So, uh, but I did, uh, I grew up in the deep south in Georgia. I went to school at Auburn. So I'm working my way this way. Um, I ended up having to get into the Air Force to stay out of the Vietnam draft and ended up at Vance Air Force Base. Went through pilot training here and spent, uh, spent my six years of military service in Enid and forgot to go home.
And we're glad that worked out that way.
It's, it's worked out great for us. Uh, done oil and gas business, started an engineering business, uh, been a city commissioner, was in the mid eighties, uh, during the times that we all like to forget. And for some of the younger people, it was a very, very turbulent time in Enid when the stock, the price of oil tumbled, um, and banks shut down, even here in Enid. It was, it was a very, very tough time. And then made it through that and then decided to come back to the city commission and not quite sure why. But I did, and I've really enjoyed it and uh, was unopposed for my second term. And I guess I got uh, four more years.
Good, good. Glad to have you here. How about your family?
My family's great. I have a, I have a wife, Mary, who uh, is very engaged and uh, everybody loves much more than me. And we got.
She's very sweet.
I'm in a similar situation. I leave with Carmen whenever possible.
And we have lots of grandkids from Georgia, from Georgia to Kansas City to Edmond. It's a lot of fun.
Good, good. And I, before I officially introduce David Mason to do a little bio, first time I met David, I heard him before I met him and all my, most of my family's from down in southwest Oklahoma. He hollered from his office and I heard that southwest Oklahoma slash Texas twang. So I bet I like this guy. Turned out I did. David Mason, who is our mayor, former city commissioner, kind of like with Rob, uh, give us a little background on you.
I will, I will. Um, I uh, moved to Enid in 2006 and from Altus, uh, which thirty miles from Texas in two directions. So yes, there's a lot of Texas twang in that. Um, I uh, moved up here with work and um, I knew one person when I moved to Enid and uh, moved my three boys up here uh, with me and just loved Enid. It didn't take any time at all to just have so many friends and know so many people. Got involved in civic clubs and organizations and uh, met my wife up here. Uh, Melanie and I, like Rob, have a much better, kinder wife than I am. And uh, just a, just a person with a great heart, cares about people. So I was very, very fortunate to meet her. We're a blended family. We have five boys and um.
Mine.
Yeah, five boys and two grandsons.
Oh boy.
But now we're getting two, uh, well, we've got two grand, or I'm sorry, two daughter-in-laws and Melanie. So she's not the only female in the family. And, and uh, they all live close. Um, we still have one at OU and one at OSU. So they're, they're getting close to finishing up. And uh, I did serve as Ward Six Commissioner. I took the last two years for uh, Mayor Panicking whenever he moved over to Mayor, finished that out and just loved it. Uh, had a great time. It was during COVID, you know?
What fun.
What fun. I didn't realize that you can have a four and a half hour city council meeting, but you can. And um, yeah. So uh, anyway, uh, come up, George decided not to run and, and, and I like city government, always have. So put my name in the, put my name in the ring and managed to win that. And, and so I guess I'm eighteen days in now as mayor and I've, I've loved every day of it.
Very cool. One quick question before we get rolling here, and I'll let April and Cindy take the bulk of this, but I think it's got to be so helpful to, in both cases, to have been here before. Cause so often you see a new city commissioner or mayor come in and there's almost a deer in the headlights in a pretty big arc to get up to speed, particularly maybe if they don't have a, a business background or it's all new to them. So how much, and Rob, I'll go with you first. How much do you think having been here before has made it easier for you to step in again as a city commissioner?
Well, there's two pieces to that. I guess the first piece being from when I was a commissioner back in the eighties to when I became a commissioner recently. And there wasn't a lot of parallel there. There was a lot of differences because the biggest thing is the city didn't have any money in the eighties. We had nothing to spend. All we were trying to do was pay our bills. And now fortunately, we got a lot of good things going on. We can do things because we have money. And the difference between the last uh, my last term and the one I'm in now, very little. I didn't miss a day. In fact, so it's, it's almost like it's just an eight-year term. So, which I'm thankful for not having to campaign.
And David, your perspective on that?
I uh, I will say it was very helpful. Whenever I come on as Ward Six Commissioner, it, it was a lot of information coming at you real quick. And if you don't understand how the budgets work and you don't understand where all the money's at and what you can move and what you can't move, and you don't understand all the projects that are already underway and the ones that they're trying to plan for, which will actually be two years out. Uh, it, it's hard to get that concept. And uh, I will say it took probably a year uh, whenever I come on as Ward Six to uh, finally where I felt like I was understanding the process. And uh, so now then coming back as mayor, while it's a different position, um, it, it helps a lot to have that experience and, and to understand how to work with the commissioners and make those phone calls. And um, it's just a huge help, I think. Um, also as, as mayor, um, I think they forget the amount of time that it takes.
I know.
You know, I was under the impression it was going to be part-time, you know?
Surprise.
Yeah. It, it, it would be tough if you had a really forty-hour-a-week job to try to do that and do it well. So.
Well, one of our previous mayors and I, you know, good guy and, and he tried to make, he's still working full-time at the time. And he tried to make every meeting and he said, God, I lost so much billing, you know, just in terms of business because I really tried to do it right. And I don't think people have a clue, particularly in the, well, Cindy, you've been mayor before.
I have. And it's important to remember that these guys aren't paid. I mean, this is a volunteer position, you know? And so they're giving of their time and their service. And so, you know, I think that, that people should appreciate that if nothing else, you know, when, when somebody's, uh, whether, whether you like them, whether you like the decisions they make, you know, people need to understand this is, this is a volunteer job, you know? So, yeah. And it does take a lot of time. And I was working full-time and had a, I also was, I had, well, I was pregnant during my term as city commissioner and mayor. So yeah, that was fun. That was fun. So I was pregnant and had a, had an infant during my time as mayor. My, my son was one year old when I was mayor. So, yeah.
Well, and April, I know you thought about actually running at some point, but you've worked with a number of people throughout the years, various places who've been on city commission, I think. And you've covered it. So you have a good feel for the sometimes insane proportions of the gig.
Well, I have not actually run for office, um, but I have contemplated it. But then I came back to my sanity and I decided not to run. But while we're sitting talking about that, Frank, you are a former city commissioner. So you know, from what you're asking, these questions really comes from what your own experiences were. So when you ran for office the first time, did you have a clue what you were getting into?
I didn't. I was abs, I just, I felt, cause I thought I was a smart person until I walked, and they always bring you in just when budget hearings are starting.
That's exactly right.
And God, you want to, you want to be made to feel ignorant. It was like, I would call up David Azell at night who preceded me on city commission and go, Azell, what the hell does this mean? But do you think, since you brought that up, do you think there's a danger in city staff kind of at some points having a conclusion on a given issue and they're trying to lead you? And if you don't have a little perspective, they might kind of take you. And I'm not talking about anything specific, but uh, do you think sometimes city staff kind of has a preconceived notion of where they'd like to go? And it's up to the commission to perhaps question that?
Uh, you know.
And I think a lot of our folks here, I'm not trying to be, but I sense that happens sometimes.
I could see in some departments that could be possible. Um, in, in our road construction, our engineering, I mean, they, with the exception of Rob, they obviously know a lot more about that field than what we could possibly know. And uh, you know, when they throw a number out of what we think that's going to cost, it's always sticker shock. You never think it's possible that it could be, you know? So you're sitting there thinking, how can we cut the cost on that? Well, concrete is what concrete is and the amount of labor. So yes, I think they tried to a little bit lead us on some of those areas, but overall uh, we, we get a lot of information on that, both ways. Uh, the thing that people don't see a lot of time, those little tablets we carry around, they send us pages and pages and pages of information. It's not unusual for there to be, this last week, there was probably three hundred pages of information on each topic for us to go through.
Yep.
Yes.
So they have it on a tablet now?
It's all on a tablet.
Cause in my day, I, on Thursday, I would get, no, I'd get just a packet delivered to my office.
It's on tablets and for me.
That's great.
They print it. So I've got it in both places whenever I'm sitting up there. But that being said, I, I think especially our staff, they do a good job giving us a lot of information for us to look at. And then we have as much time as we want to ask questions. A lot of our questions are even addressed before we get up there. Uh, I couldn't count the number of times I picked up the phone and go, hey, what is this item and why are we doing this? And uh, you know, Rob can speak to that also. So when you see us get up there and we ask three questions about a four million dollar item, it's because we've already looked at it. We've kicked it around. We've talked about it. Uh, when I was Ward Six Commissioner, my first night, we passed the budget, right? I hadn't seen the budget.
I know. It's insane. It is insane.
Uh, I got home and someone called me and said, I can't believe y'all spent like five minutes on that. I'm going, look, I'm not sure how this still works, but I know that they told me they'd been in budget hearings now for weeks. So I think there was more thought than that put in it.
Yeah.
Oh, of course. Of course there is.
So uh, probably kind of babbling, but I don't think we're being led in one direction or the other. And I, I think we get to ask our own questions.
Speaking, well, thank you. Speaking of questions and, and the budget and coming in and having to vote right away on a budget, do you think, uh, now looking back, because you're in, and looking back to your first time, did you come to city commission meetings? Did you go to the budget hearings when you knew you were elected and going to have to vote on the budget? I mean, how much preparation does it take to really walk in? Cause it is a big budget. It has a lot of things that affects almost everybody in Enid, whether they know it or not. It does. So.
I think that's a good point. When I, when I got elected the second time, I started going to study sessions and going to the meetings in advance of it because I knew what was coming. But you know, someone that's never been there, they don't really understand that they're going to start feeding you with a fire hose on the first day. And you better be ready. So, and I've always told people that after they got elected, you really need to start going, even before, before you're even.
When you're running for office. I appreciated when I saw candidates in the, in the commission chambers, but while they were running.
You don't know the issues that we're dealing with. And uh, so I, I think that, I mean, going back to the city manager, I served under three and I think Gerald by far is the best. And he, he absolutely does not try to lead us. He provides us information. And if you don't, you know, if, if we disagree with him, even though he might personally think this is the best way to go, he doesn't try to lobby us. He doesn't try to, to, to push us at all. So I, I really respect him. I suspect some of that's his military.
Background.
Kind of chain of command type thing.
Yeah. He recognizes that, you know, we can do the deal if we want to. And but I, I can't even think of a time when we've had to go over and tell him, no Gerald, we're not doing that.
Commissioner Stallings, then, um, was Jim Ferry your first city manager you served with?
No, there was a guy before Jim Ferry.
Lyle?
No.
Bill Gamble? Wasn't Gamble?
No, Gamble was here when I first came to town.
You guys won't remember this guy. His Bob.
Yeah.
Bob.
Elliot?
Elliot. Uh, yes, of course I remember him.
I've forgotten.
Went on to make a huge thing out of a trash mountain skeev valley somewhere. I mean, he really did. He, he made a, a point of making some of their, their landfill use in another town into like a.
Ski slope.
Yeah.
Forgot that.
Hazards were tires sticking. I don't know about that. But he wasn't necessarily that popular at the time, if, as I remember, because he wanted to um, cement all the medians. If, if I remember correctly, there was, at the time, he thought that would cut down on mowing.
It would.
I had forgotten that. Yeah, that was a wildly popular approach.
And global warming.
He was ahead of the curve.
But I believe that was him as, as the city manager in that time. Um, and it wasn't, it wasn't unpopular, but it was kind of just different. I don't know what we were thinking because that was also the time when on our overpass on the north side, uh, we planted, um, not we, there was an Indian blanket field planted and people went nuts because when they're done blooming, they look like weeds, which is something similar to.
Something similar.
What we've come up with before. When I first started covering the city commission, I was um, twenty-two years old. Um, I have, I covered two or three, maybe four different city managers, uh, many, that many mayors or, or more. And um, one of the things I was told early on, and I thought, oh, you know what? This is exactly the truth. It's changed a little bit since the eighties and the nineties, but it was always, you know what? The only thing people really care about is just don't mess with their trash, their sewer, or their cable. And I'm like, well, now, now that makes sense. Those things are important.
What was the last one?
Trash, their cable. Cause we had one cable TV stick, cables.
You know, that's gone.
And now it's internet. So I don't think that's the issue, but I'm pretty sure it's still sewer and trash and probably watering.
I'd say you got to include water.
Yeah.
You don't, you remember puddles.
Well, and then in the nineties or early two thousands, late uh, mid nineties, uh, many of, uh, there was a groundswell of people who were very upset about um, the resurfacing of, in your ward, uh, of roads on the east side that were primarily dirt roads and they needed sealing of some kind. And I believe it was uh, it was in that ward, but I believe that's when they did the ash, the slurry seal ash overlay to.
Long slurry seal. Speaking of three and a half hour meetings, we had, we had, we had.
It was that.
Back in the day, the same kinds of things.
A big issue and um, the water fields were still on the radar. We hadn't really started in ninety-five, we started worrying about BRAC, which was kind of new to everyone. Uh, and, and you were a city commissioner during that period of time. How frightening was that as you knew we were a target?
We were. We all, we all knew it and uh, we were, we were scared to death because it looked like it was between us and Lubbock. And you know, we were trying to figure out why we were better than Lubbock and the way it came down. I, I, we still don't know for sure exactly what the scoring was and exactly why we, we were able to prevail. But we were all scared to death because the economic impact of Vance is so important to us.
And that's another topic to kind of move forward on. So from that time, when you're first on the commission and where we stand now as far as the, all the work that we've done, all the relationships that we've built, uh, the city has built with uh, you know, Vance Air Force Base, the military, the trips to Washington, those kinds of things. Where do you think we stand now as far, as opposed to then, as far as, you know, making sure that those stakeholders know the value that Vance brings to not just the military, but the entire community?
I, I would jump in and tell you that Mike Cooper has done a yeoman's duty in, in the work that he's done in establishing the relationships up, up with the guys in the Pentagon. When he walks into a four-star general and they call him by his name, there's something there. I mean, he knows, he knows where Enid is.
It's not the city of Enid. It's, oh, it's Mike, our friend. I, I agree. I think Coop has done a heck of a job in that area.
He started when he was mayor, worked for AT&T, kind of got on the job training for a long time. Bless AT&T for allowing those. And, and, and the businesses who do allow people to serve and still maintain their jobs, that's big. And it's a big time-consuming commitment that the business, unless you're self-employed, takes on to, to let people serve. So that's, that's big as well. But I think one of the things that I noticed from uh, covering uh, the Enid visits to Washington DC.
And you won a couple too.
Oh, yeah, many, several. And then during the BRAC rounds, um, went up with, as communications person for that group. And Rob was there, a lot of us were there. Um, and it was, that when I first started going with the chamber and then BRAC hit, I didn't know the value of, of, I don't know that anybody really did, because it was really just kind of a greeting grab with your congressman and your senators. And you told them kind of what your game plan was. We had our elevator stories in case we got stuck with somebody. And um, it all changed because then the whole thing was everybody was pulling to save the bases in Oklahoma. You go to the Pentagon, they, they can't show preference of any kind. They can't tell you, oh, it's okay. Don't worry. Go ahead. They can't say anything and you can't read them. There, you just can't read the room and you're trying your hardest. You're trying to figure out what brings you the edge. And those, those trips changed from our wonderful Chamber of Commerce who organized it. It's, it was kind of like a greeting grab. And here are our things we need for Enid to, holy cow, we have got to shoulders together and save our base. And I don't know that that message has ever gotten off the table, though we don't have backgrounds.
Fortunately.
Well, very fortunately. I mean, it could happen, but.
It could happen again.
Yes, it could. It's always out there.
I think one of, you know, you said, what's the difference between us and Lubbock Commissioner Stallings? And I think the only answer I have maybe is the protection of our airspace with the ACAS.
Airspace had a lot to do with it. We're, we're kind of that off the beaten path, fortunately.
That is fortunate.
I think the thing that scared me, and this was back when I was on the mid nineties, they did a report of, I think it was Enid and Garfield County, what's the per capita income of the county was with Vance. Take that away.
Oh, yeah. That's true.
We're like the Delta in Mississippi, you know?
It wasn't the time.
I'm sure it's changed. I'm sure it's changed. It's a little more balanced now, but back then it was so stark.
Yes.
That it was just all, not a death penalty, but. Well, one other thing, and you mentioned about how this young man was helpful when it came to construction. I had the privilege of serving with him on Call Lake Oversight. Where are we on that? Cause sometimes I'd be thinking they were talking Sanskrit when they were talking construction, but it seems, Mayor, how do you, how do you feel about the Call Lake project at this point? And I'll, I'll let Rob follow up on that.
Yeah. Um, well, first of all, I'll say we're very fortunate to have had Rob on this. Um.
Bingo. I agree.
We just, um, it, it's, it's just very difficult to understand and all the processes and the different subcontractors. And it goes on and on and on. And uh, you know, we tried to do our very best earlier on to make sure that we were locked in on everything, but I don't care how hard you try.
It's construction.
Every construction job, big job, goes a little over budget and longer than what you expect. But I will say, while this one's gone up just a little bit, uh, it's been held pretty tight. I mean, we're, we're, we're just a little bit over budget, but I feel much better about it. We're in the last phase going down Chestnut and uh, that's going to go fast. Uh, that, that was our agreement that we're going to have everything out of the way for them to come through and start, we'll, we'll close off whatever roads we need to make sure that they can get equipment in there. And they're going to go down through there pretty fast. So that'll be starting pretty soon. And uh, so that being said, um, it's a big project, but it's going well. And uh, I, in July of next year, we're going to turn the tap on sometime in there. So we're excited.
Now explain why this is, you know, just kind of in retrospect, why is this so important for you?
You know, uh, and I've said this many, many times, but you sit there and you try to think, boy, that's a lot of money. That's, do we really need this? But when you actually sit there, our capacity to filter and clean water, to make potable water that we can use is in and around twenty-one million gallons a day, which is a lot of water with, unless you realize that during the hot summer, we go through about eighteen and a half million gallons of debt a day. And Coke uses about four to six. So if we had another company like Coke call tomorrow.
Couldn't accommodate them.
We couldn't take them.
Yeah.
Could not take them. We were maxed out. We, we were limited how much more our population could go up. Our population probably wasn't going to go up because we couldn't bring any other manufacturing in. So by doing that, not only does it give us water supply for our citizens for the next fifty to a hundred years, we now have room to expand and grow. And so I don't think we'll even realize how important the water, water project is until a couple of years after.
Right.
The water's turned on.
Right, right. That's a good answer.
Rob, your take on it too?
Well, I, I serve on the Water Resources Board and every month we go down to a meeting. I was there Tuesday. And we go around the room and talk about who, who got rain.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That is the biggest topic every, every Tuesday morning or monthly. And western Oklahoma, both up in the Panhandle and down in southwestern Oklahoma, are really struggling. These people are really struggling. And then we, then they always ask me about the, they all know about this, what we're doing, the Call Lake water thing. And they're all just, man, how lucky can you be to have a lake that has water that can, you, you can. And they're all just, man, how lucky can you be to have a lake that has water that can you, you can allocate out of it? And you can afford to build a pipeline.
Yeah.
You know, it's, uh, they're enth- they're enthralled about how, how we put this whole deal together. And we had to borrow a lot of money and it's going to take a long time to pay it all back. But the mayor just hit the nail on the head. Had we not, we would be struggling to keep everybody in the middle of the summer.
And it shows how, how as a commission, you can't just think about next week or next year. You have to think ahead. You have to think ten, twenty years down the line.
Absolutely.
And I, I, that money that we borrowed, I, if I remember correctly, Rob, um, I think we got that at one and a half percent through the Water Resources Board.
Well, we, we were, we were right there at the bottom of the dip.
Yes.
Just luck.
Uh, we kept waiting every week to sign that thing because our advisors kept saying, we think it's going to go down. We think it's going to go down. And that's great unless it goes up, right? And we just kept every week, we're going, let's not sign it, let's not sign it. And it went down one more click, like a quarter point, half point, and we took it. And the advisors were telling us that that saved us almost thirty million dollars over thirty years. You know, we took a chance.
I'd rather be lucky than good. So, you know, and Frank, we've talked kind of a little bit about the past and that right now our, 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 the city's main eye is on water. Let's ask, what are Commissioner and, and Mayor and former mayors and former commissioners? And just somebody who doesn't run for anything, um, what, what do we see in the future? Put your mayoral crystal ball in front of you. We've talked about the past, concerns we've addressed then, talked about the present. You're addressing those for the future, but what is the next big thing for Enid? A task or a positive? Or a positive task?
Well, I, I think it's definitely a positive. I, I think like you were saying Cindy, that you, you can't think about today. Today's already gone.
Right.
But you have to start thinking about five years, ten years and twenty years out. That being said, if you don't have an infrastructure to where you can come in, businesses, when they are ready to move somewhere else, one, you're in competition trying to get them. They don't just come here. And number two, you have to have a site location. We're going to have to buy another hmm, four or five hundred acres to increase our industrial arts park. Uh, some of the developers talk all the time that businesses, they want pad ready. Utilities already there, grades already set, so that when they have it in their budget, they're ready to start. So I think our next big deal is increase our industrial, industrial park large enough. Cause you don't have little four acre tracts anymore. Companies coming in that need four acres. They need large spaces. So I think if we get that and we've got our, um, we've just done a housing study to see what we need there, uh, which is very interesting if you really drill down on that. We've got the water coming in. I think we have a council now that is very interested in expansion. So, and we have a new, uh, economic director, uh, uh, out at the ERDA. And, uh, you know, I think all the pieces are coming together for us if we will take advantage of those. But we just have to be able to see farther than today.
Right.
But you know, from a short perspective though, what people want are places to shop.
And a movie theater.
Store. And they want a movie theater. And those things are also on the horizon for us. And, and you're seeing more places to eat. You know, people eat out more. When I was a kid, we went out to eat once a month if we went out that often. Hate to tell you how often we go out to eat.
You know what drives more restaurants? More population.
Exactly.
Yeah, they will come if we grow our population.
We do like to eat out. Mayor, or City Commissioner, former City Commissioner Frank Baker.
Yes.
What do you see?
I, I think a lot of the, the second part of the question, you know, businesses and more amenities. But it, it's kind of like David just made the point that we got to have the increased population. Cause I'll be honest, you know, I'm a shopping snob. I would, I would, I like to buy local as much as possible, but I would love to have a target here. Just, just to be candid, you know?
Do you call it Targé?
I will, because I'm shallow. But I, I think, I think that's part, but the infrastructure, that'll be part of what gets the more population. So I think that's probably the lead dog in this whole conversation.
And, you know, workforce, that is, you know, part of the population equation. But, um, you know, on the short term and, uh, you know, things for people to do, quality of life is always a big thing. And so that's why the movie theater has become an important issue. And maybe you guys can give us a little update if you have any, anything else going on with that. What's any, any more specifics or a timeline when that project's really going to, cause I'm a, I'll believe it when I see it kind of person. Oh, yeah, because of the, the economics of the movie industry, basically. We sure, we sure do need that. And then Stillwater just announced this huge program. They're going to work with a. Tonkawa tribe and build a big entertainment center, which includes movie theaters, bowling, pickleball, all that kind of stuff. So.
Conference rooms?
I don't know about confer- I didn't see that part. Anyway, that's, you know, these are things that, you know, we have to have here in Enid for, not, not only for the population here, but for the people that we want to move here. And when companies come, uh, and, and look at our community, they want to see what's, what's good. Um, what's good for their families to do, you know, just all kind, all those things that have, that go into that.
Well, I'll, I'll bow out and let the, these guys, because they're handling this stuff. But I remember having a long interview with Harold Hamm a couple of years before Continental moved Oklahoma City. And he talked about the fact, he said, you'd get the people in here and, and the folks they would be hiring. They're pretty excited about the company and the professionalism and the salary. And then you bring in the families and they look around and say, there's just not enough to hold. And they said, we'd lose them. We'd lose them when the families got involved. I think that's part of what this conversation is about. What we, we need the infrastructure on the front end, but then on the back end, we need more to bring that hopefully at some point increased population.
You know, I know, okay, I'm going to answer my own question. What do I see in the future? Well, thank you. Oh, what do I see in the future? What do I see as the, as the goals? And, and yeah, shopping's fine. I like shopping. I shop local as much as I can. In fact, I can do it all here. I can find what I, I want and what I need. I can find it here. Um, but what I think is, um, is a pressing issue, what has been an issue for years. I'm not privy to the, how the chart flow goes on the projects that come up for what you said, infrastructure. And you were talking about industrial infrastructure and what we need for the industries. And I am very well aware that they do want pad ready. When I hear infrastructure, Mayor, I hear how our water lines going in our oldest part of our town. We see a lot of development to the west, which means it has a farther way to travel to our water processing plant. And the industry, that's okay. It's kind of close. If you're going to put it on our east side of town. But those pipes still go through the oldest part of town and some of, some of our best properties, a beautiful section of town is our east side. But what I hear from people in Enid is they don't care about the east side. I don't think that's true. But how is our infrastructure going if you go through west to east closest to our water?
I think.
No, you go ahead.
We, we had an issue, uh, a couple of years ago. You, if you watched us, you, you may have seen it. We had a, a lady from Southern Heights showed up at our meeting and she had a, she had a jar of water. And she stood up and it was, it looked like murky. And she said, uh, this is the water you sold me today.
How powerful.
How powerful. And, and, and I said, um, where do you live? Well, she lived in Southern Heights and if you know that neighborhood, it kind of goes down toward Boggy Creek. She lived at the bottom of the line, on a dead end line. And so all the sediment eventually migrated down to her. And, and, you know, it was, it just brought a tear to you. This lady, and she was obviously drinking water that they brought in. But, um, we talked to Gerald, we talked to engineering, we looped, put a looped line in there. And less than a year, we were fortunate enough to be able to borrow or get a grant from the water board and, and, uh, it's fixed.
Good.
But your point is well taken because we only did that because she brought that. To the city commission meeting and stood up, you know? But we need to spend more time looking at the east side. And hopefully this housing study is going to focus us to, uh, to that. But it's just hard to, uh, it's really hard to generate that because as you know, when the housing goes down, the population changes.
Correct.
So there's a, it's hard to, it's hard to sh- make that shift reverse.
It is. And not only that, and what we've got into even on the housing study is, uh, one thing you've got elderly people that don't want to leave their home, but they don't have the income to actually put any dollars into their home. But if we do get one that we can purchase, take down and have a vacant lot, and we have a developer that wants to go in there and put up a unit, we get into a thing called comps. Where they go to the bank to borrow the money and they go, well, let's take three comps in that area. And that's what we're going to loan eighty percent of that.
And it takes a nosedive.
Takes nosedive. And so a developer goes, you know what? I can do that or I can go right over here.
Make more money.
Where I can get more money from the bank so I can build more house and I can make more money. So it's, it's challenging and I wish I had exactly the right answer for you. I will tell you though, uh, even though our water plant is going to be on the, uh, west side of town, our distribution is still going to be where it's at, more in the center of town. But also in that industrial park is closer to I thirty-five. They don't have to go, and it's twenty minutes to go across Enid, any way you look at it. So, uh, and that's in a car, right? So there is a reason why that's out there. There's probably more room for expansion. Um, so, you know, I'm not going to say we need another industrial plant on the other side just so that it's closer to the water line.
Right.
You know, we've got the capacity to send that water over there. That's not a problem with new lines. And we've just changed out, um, and I, I don't know, Rob, I don't think it's what you were talking about. Those two new big lines that we put over on that side, that was two point eight million dollars. Because there were, there was not enough pressure at, at a lot of homes over there. And, uh, not only that, at the, at the fire hydrant, there wasn't enough. So that helped a lot of things by doing that. And I think we have to continue to look at that. But we don't tell business where they can go put a business.
I've got to be responsive to that. Well, Cindy, I'm going to tee you up. We're kind of like coming to our last few minutes of our conversation. But, okay, we have a little group. We go to one of our local breweries on Wednesday, sometimes bring our dogs. And I was all ready to walk in. These two gals have been there in the past. I was all ready to talk NBA and what fun stuff we're going to do this weekend. Hell, they're all talking about the Friends of the Library Board. So Cindy, what would be your final question? And that was the truth. We had two folks who applied and these gals.
There's a couple of questions I have in there, but I, I will go, you know, I will go with this question, which was, you know, we talk about local civic involvement and that's something that communities welcome. Okay. I think most of us welcome community and civic involvement. However, you know, in recent years, it seems like some of that involvement has caused division and particularly when it comes to the library. So, you know, what is the, in your opinion, real quick, what is the best way to navigate the challenges brought about when different factions of the community are in conflict with one another? You know, how can you as city leaders bridge that divide, help bridge that divide?
I'll, I'll take that one. Certainly the, uh, the library board. If, if you meet with these people that, that have been on it previously, they are really good people. Some of them are pillars of our community, literally. Most of them are very conservative. Okay. And so that, that in itself causes conflict. Cause there are a lot of people in our community, uh, that, that aren't conservative, like probably is in any community. And, and I think for whatever reason, and I don't know the exact methodology of how it happened. They're feeling like they're left out at the library. And that's a, you know, because of books and periodicals and displays and what are the words we use? Displays?
Displays, yeah.
And there's another one, but. And what, and David and I, I think philosophically disagree maybe a little bit on this. I think we need to have that board more balanced.
And I agree.
And, and I'm catching a lot of grief right now because I, I did that the other night. And, and, or I tried to do my part of that, but I think it's the right thing to do.
I do too.
I, I think ultimately balance on that board will, there's, there's someone that, that got left out the other night. That is a very, very nice person, has done yeoman service on that board. And she feel like, feels like she got cut out and, and it's really kind of too bad. But that's the only way you can, you can take a board that's that large if you don't put several members on there from the others. At least it have an alternate.
You know, and that's one thing I've said and written about, that the balance is important. And when it gets off balance, it's, you know, that's when you have problems.
David, you start, cause I, I think, I was talking to somebody who was chatting with you, I think the first one you went to. And she said, you know, it was kind of like watching professional wrestling. With the library board.
Going to the meeting?
Yeah, going to the meeting.
Yeah, it, so, uh, man, where to start? Um, I think that sometime back because of several issues, there was some trust lost over there. Um, I think that there were some books, uh, that were placed in areas that I don't think were age appropriate. I am not one that's ever going to ban a book. I'm not the guy that's going to put them out in the street and burn them. I, I'll never do that. But I think that books need to be age appropriate. I used to own some movie theaters. There's a G rating all the way up to an R rating. We couldn't sell a ticket to someone under, under whatever. And, uh, there was some other stuff going on. So I think there was some trust lost there by a lot of people. On a, on the fringes of right and on the left. And I think it caught our city staff a little off guard. Matter of fact, I know it did. You know, they don't go there, go through those books and go, wait a minute, wait a minute, here's a word I don't like. So that being said, I think we were late coming to the game. So it got fired up pre- pretty hard. And then by the time the city got involved, no matter what you did, it was still an issue. A lot of those issues that we're hearing about have been corrected. Uh, a lot of change has taken place over there. Now, as far as the library board goes, I, I've been watching that for a long time now. I went to the last meeting and I think anytime you set a board up that is too far one way, it causes a slippery slope. I don't care which way you go on it. And my thought was that we need to kind of right that just a little bit. I don't want to go left. I don't want to go right. I want some people that I think can ask good questions and think through problems. And I think we were able to do that. The people that did not make it, I don't think we, eh, they didn't do anything bad. But I think it was a different group of people we wanted for a different time. Does that make sense?
Sure, sure.
And, um, so that being said, I, uh, uh, there's going to be some more changes, I hope, coming at that library, all positive. I think we put them in and we, the city, the city commission kind of put them in an impossible situation where they were trying to fix some things that they may or may not have had authority to do. We can fix that and make those guidelines just a little better for them. So their parameters are much easier to meet. And, uh, so I think that's something that's prob- probably still going to take several months. But we're going to get that thing back to where anybody can go in there. If you're thirteen, twelve years old, you can't go check out certain books. And, um, if mom and dad don't care, mom and dad needs to come in, check it out for you. You know, we, we have to also think about liability issues towards the city. You know, I've got my personal views on every topic, but at the end of the day, I have to think about, do, do we have legal standing on this? And we're having that opinion drawn up right now from outside council so that we can find out. That way it's not David Mason's opinion. I've got standing and we have the right to do X, Y, Z. And when we do, if we get challenged on it, we will be in a good position to defend ourselves. It's, we're not running off of emotion. And I think that's been happening a lot.
Starting with the pandemic and, you know, it just kind of bled over. But that's a great answer. Appreciate it.
So, right. Well, guys, I want to thank you all for being here. This is, uh, one of the. those things we love to do on Enid Buzz in conjunction with Enid News and Eagle. And we'll get this on City of Enid too, so they can share it because I think this is very helpful to find out some past, you know, perspective and moving ahead. So a big thank you to City Commissioner Rob Stallings, our Mayor David Mason, my two colleagues over there, April Danahay and Cindy Allen. I'm Frank Baker. Thanks for watching or listening.
Wow. What'd you think?
Man, that's cool.
Uh, you can call us at five eight oh, five four one three eight oh five. If you have some, uh, if you have a, if you want us to do a, an episode on a story from Enid's past, let us know, uh, because there are some really cool stories. Um, and you can email us at buzz@buzzheadmedia.com. So, uh, again, thank, uh, Enid Autobody for being our, uh, corporate sponsor of the show. And I think we're going to get out of here.
See you later.
See ya.
Hey Buzzheads, welcome to, uh.
Buzzhead Radio.
Buzzhead Radio.
Buzzhead Radio.